...in session to complete our business of the day. And first, we have the Commissioner's actions, so...
Well, yeah, why don't we do the Felicia piece first?
First, okay.
He's here to just talk about-
Right.
The grant recommendations.
All right.
Oh, good.
And appointments to the-
And the appointments. So, why don't you talk about both of those, Felicia, since you're here?
Okay. Well, we have a (laugh) there, yes, I would, there's two actions that you need to take as relates to seats on the CCEDC. We're looking for a motion to appoint as a new member, Mr. Jay Zavala. I believe you have a CBVIR that he so graciously supplied for us. So, he would be filling a term that was originally occupied by Admiral Vernon. And that term, I believe, expires 12/31/11, as it's written here.
Twenty thirteen?
No, no, no.
No, twenty-
He's gonna fulfill the Vernon terms, so, next year. And for one year, and then we'll look for a reappointment at the end of that. So, that's the first motion, and we, the EDC had some discussion on this and is looking forward and recommended that you so vote.
Felicia, would you please identify yourself and your relationship with the county?
Oh, sure. My name is Felicia Penn, and I'm the Vice Chair of the Cape Cod Economic Development Council.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak-
A volunteer position.
I'd like to speak in favor of this appointment to Jay Zavala. Jay Zavala and I served on the Cape Cod Commission, and Jay Zavala is an old and good friend. And him being the President of the Chamber of Commerce, I think he would bring a lot of insight with him to an understanding of the business community, as well as his demonstrated interest in the environment, which, you know, which he showed when he was a voting member of the Cape Cod Commission representing the family. So, I'm delighted to, you know, to split this.
Make the motion?
Yes, I also have nothing to add. A second.
Okay.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed or in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Your second?
There's a reappointment of four members whose terms expire at the end of this month, and we've just got the nominating committee had a discussion with all four of them. They would all four like to be appointed, so we are recommending a reappointment for three years for terms to expire 12/31/13 for Alice Boyd, who just completed one term, and then David Willard, John Kilroy, and Alan White. So, there are four members which, who would be going for a three-year term.
I would put forward that motion to reappoint.
Happy to second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed?
Thank you.
You've done a great job.
As have you. Thank you.
And then we come to the grants. The grants are-
Before we leave that-
Yes.
I would be, I would like to find out if we could encourage John Kilroy to give us some, you know, some advice and assistance with regard to virtual, you know, let's say, virtual application. He's been, wasn't he in charge of a lot of the IT over at the Cape Cod Hospital?
A virtual application, not sure.
Well, he's in some, I have some interest in determining how we could create a virtual meeting modality for us in the county, and I know that he had a lot to do, you know, recently, he was, wasn't he the Chief of Information Technology?
It was the IT, right, Head of IT for Cape Cod Healthcare, correct?
If he has any thoughts as to how we could implement that-
I will have him, shall he contact you?
If you would, thank you.
Or, yes, you?
Yes.
Okay. And what's your, do I have your, I have your email, so, we're all set. Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. We may be, we may also consider Peter Carlson-
Of course.
-as a, as a resource on that.
And Peter Carlson has already been on our, you know, has submitted a very significant, you know, a piece of work that we need to apply and encumber.
Great. Okay, you have also in your packets, I believe you have a, a report that was made for $150,000 of Cape and Island License Plate Economic Development Grants. As you know, the process consists of a letter of intent first, and so we put out a request for letters of intent. We had about 22 people respond to that, agencies, not people, you know, agencies and organizations. And the committee met in October to review those, and we whittled those down to 14, and we requested that, we invited 14 of those original 22 to submit a full grant. The deadline for that was November 10th. Out of the 14, we had 12, we had two declared unresponsive. We had 12 submit. We met on November 22nd and ran the grants, and I believe the report is in front of you, there are six out of the 12 that we are requesting funding. The total adds up to $150,000 exactly. One grant, we are recommending funding for, it's a total, I believe, for the Cape Cod Museum of Art down in Dennis. We're recommending a grant of $22,500 for that, for that entity, but they've requested it in two years, 11, you know, exactly split, 50/50. So, we are recommending that that grant go that way. There are some individual terms on some of these grants that, you know, pending a report that we would do this and that, whatever, but all of them we're recommending full funding for. And I believe you have, I just handed my report to Mary Potts, so I can't, it's off the top of my head, so, if you want me to-
I'm especially interested in, in supporting the Cape Cod Commission grant for the Business Survey. I think that's been, that's been needed for some time.
Right.
I'm glad to see that come forward, as well as looking at the feasibility of using the Armory for that multicultural center. Although there is a, although there's a wonderful room over the community center in the Towne of Barn School, it's obvious that we need, you know, we need to spend some time in assessing where a, let's say, a larger venue might, might be.
Right. Did you, just as a quick review for the sake of the, the public, the Junior Tech, Inc., which is basically a spinoff from the Tech Council, they requested program development and planning for five new STEM workshops, science, technology, engineering, and math. That was a $10,000 request that being funded in full capabilities. It was a $25,000, actually, they requested $39,000. We're, we're giving them 25 toward expansion of the kitchen facility over there. We'll provide new employment opportunities for people with disabilities, all related to the expansion of Centerville Pie Company and, and that wonderful business that's going there. Commission, as you mentioned, they requested $51,000 for the Cape Cod Business Survey. They're, we're granting to them $45,000. Museum of Arts School, the Careers Art Internship, we just discussed that, that's $22.5, $11.250 for two years. Barstool Grove Management, the 25, they, they requested 50, and this does have a restriction on the money, that the money only be used for the cost analysis, which they're calling a feasibility study. It's really not a feasibility study, those were their terms, but when we looked through the rest of the grant, it was technically a cost analysis of converting the Armory, what it needs to do to be a, a multi-use center. Okay? So, we're asking that they only spend the 25 on that analysis and not on marketing and admin, which they requested in the budget. We are not interested in funding that.
How are you going to see that that's how they do it? Is there gonna be a report given, like a breakdown of the money?
What I would really like them to do is send the invoice to us, basically, and pay it out of that money and reserve it. I don't know if that, in fact, is the way that they're gonna operate and happen, but I'm, I think that's the only way that we can assure that the dollars only get spent for that. Is that, is that doable?
When, when we respond to them, as the grants come to order-
It should be in the contract.
It must be part of the contract.
That's part of the contract, that's, yeah.
Right. So, it-
Did they say anything about the historical significance of the site, because there had been some, you know, some kind of-
They do mention about the plaque and making sure that people understand that was still, and I know there's a movement in town locally to retain that as only a historical site and like a museum. Clearly, there needs to be an income analysis happening, and I think that's what this cost analysis will, will pertain to get addressed. But we, the grant was rather, shall we say, aloof in certain areas and not very specific, and there was a lot of stuff talked about, about a photography center and stuff, talking about marketing and talking about, you know, Harbor Your Arts down near Bismarck Park, et cetera, et cetera. And the county has already invested $225,000 in the Harbor Your Arts Program. We consider that enough so that that should be self-sustaining at this point, and we're looking to help this, which, which does connect Main Street to that and, and make sure that they do have the appropriate information, but we were not interested in using license plate funds for marketing of a different project at this time.
Well, it seems to me that since a pathway to the, to the harbor from, from the green has been well-established, that that would be an element that would be added to that pathway since it's kind of on the way, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a little bit to the right of that, but I mean, certainly, it's, it makes sense. It's a neighbor. It's adjacent to, it's close enough, minus the pump house. And last but not least, certainly, is Cape Cod Regional Technical High School in Harwich. They're looking for, to purchase energy efficiency upgrade equipment for training of students, instructors, teachers, and general Cape Cod workforce training. They're working in conjunction with Cape Cod Compact also, and they're looking to purchase the hydrogen fuel cell trainers and IT equipment to enhance the science programs. They requested $38,000. There was a little bit of padding in their grant, I'd say. My word's not theirs, obviously. So, we're granting them $22.5 to use for direct materials purchase only, and so that needs to be listed in there, in the, in the terms of that grant, too.
Now, you'll work with Mark on the wording of the contract and how-
I'd be happy to.
Yeah, sure. Just to see the final product.
It'd be the same, I think the report kind of says where there's any ramifications, but if you want more detail, I do have the initial grant, so we could be very specific in their budget if you'd like to get that information.
Yeah, in the scope of services.
If you could.
Exactly. So, that was, so the cumulative total granted was $150,000. The Cape Cod EDC did have discussions on this, and they recommend that you support the requests as submitted today.
I'd also like to speak, according to Cape Tech, I was at the Cape Tech about a week and a half ago, and it took the opportunity to, you know, talk to, with a fellow brother here, you know, who got the science teacher of the, of the Year Award over there, and he's quite excited about, you know, about the potential of doing this. The kids are moving more towards technology. There is, there is employment opportunities that are available, and this all sort of fits into a curriculum that's designed to put kids to work.
Right, and it's green, green, green building assessment, et cetera, so that's what we're looking to do.
All good stuff.
And hopefully, that will stay in-
And I just mentioned, I think Felicia's aware, maybe not, we did a couple of weeks ago vote to do the marketing piece because we had gotten the first quarter bill from the chamber for the license plate funding market. So, they did that a couple of weeks ago, so.
Great.
I'd want to see that money go away.
How many proposals did you get altogether?
Proposals totally-
I mean, you know what, yeah, the grant, you know, requests.
Well, it starts with a letter of intent. We had 22.
Oh, so you had 22.
And so, we're handing out funding, six of them, when all of a sudden we got them.
Okay, all right. I didn't care.
We started at 22. We, we requested 14 submit for a full grant, and six are being funded.
Okay.
And I wanted to, after you vote these, I wanted to give you an update on one that we funded in the last round, that we asked for some stated reports of progress before we could release the rest of the money, because we asked these people to collaborate, work together, and they hadn't originally come in that way, and it's been very successful. So, I wanted to report on that.
Can I just ask a question first? Felicia mentioned that there was one, which one was, that it was sort of in a two fiscal year piece. Do you mean to award 100% of the money out of this year's and encumber it, or do you mean to do that in two fiscal year pieces? Or do you care?
I would like to, I think, encumber it, yes.
That's the easier piece.
Yeah, so it kind of goes along, it's there and sitting, and then we're just gonna figure it out, providing the reports after it. Exactly.
Okay, well, I'd be happy to move these.
And I second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? Motion carries.
Just a quick update, if you would. I, I did receive probably last week, maybe the week before, an updated report as, as we requested from BiFreshBiLocal in the, in the Cape Cod Commercial Fisherman's Association. We're doing that, the CSF programs.
We heard this last night at their annual meeting.
Oh, yeah. Oh?
Yes, it was fabulous.
They did, they had their annual thing last night. I'm trying to not attend.
I do know.
So, you got the update.
No, your name was mentioned.
Really?
Couple of times.
Hopefully, not in vain, so that's good. But we were very, so you, you're up to date on the report, so that story of it, we're very pleased-
But you might share with the, you know, the people.
Yeah. Well, we're very pleased with both entities, you know. They came in under the, the area of interest was distribution channels for local goods. So, we're putting aquaculture under goods and services as well. So, it's not just produce, I mean, it's fish, and it's food, et cetera. So, the more we can do that, the more sustainable this area becomes, the more money stays in here, the better we are economically. So, it's very exciting to see that they have worked out the marketing piece together, and I think they've done a lot of mutual supportive places while both programs are still operating separately, but they seem to have mutually gained from each other's existence, and there's a lot of strength being built in that field now. And there's a lot more awareness than, say, two years ago when we first started to fund BiFreshBiLocal. So, we're really happy that the Fisheries, Sustainable Fisheries Program, the pilot program that we funded was very successful. They had 100 beta people, I guess, participate in this program. It's gotten a lot of press, which is terrific, and it's very exciting. We're hoping that it will expand for the future because the, the higher the prices that they can get locally, the fresher the food, and, you know, the better it is for the local fishing.
And, and of course, the most important thing to me is that it's an opportunity for people to get a livable income-
Right.
-there in Cape Cod.
Absolutely. It's livable wage, not to mention it's a sustainable program. So, I, I doubt that they'll have to come back to us for another year to get that program going, because they already have the base there, and they proved, I think they pretty much understand. I know they put a terrific questionnaire out. They're really working with the group that signed up first and getting information for how much will you pay, how far will you drive, what kind of fish do you want, you know, how often do you need to pick it up, you know. They're really, really getting worthy information out of this, and I, I think the, their, the design of their next round will be, will be terrific.
And it was exciting for me to hear them use the, use what they had to leverage, because in that meeting last night, there was, you know, Leo Kakounis came forward, said the Farm Bureau, you know, wanted, you know, wanted to provide some advertising and support money, as did, as did a couple of other people, you know, in the, in the audience. It was kind of exciting to see that all coming together, that they had their, you know, that they had their focus on how can we move forward and grow this opportunity here in the case.
Year-round, as opposed to just those five weeks that they were doing.
Yeah, well, I mean, it was a pilot program.
Right.
Very understood that it was, but I think they've learned enough information now where they could do it year-round, and they could expand it beyond just the middle Cape area.
Well, they found it was sustainable.
Yep.
And if they could use some of what they have learned in that period to, to transfer to a year-round.
Yeah, they talked about four-season, you know, four-season production of, you know, produce and, you know, and stuffs here in the Cape. It was, it was very, you know, it's very exciting to hear that, and also to hear about both their success and the energy that they're putting into, and the fact, and the part that comes out, you can get jobs that will pay, you know, pay livable wage here in Cape Cod, because we're in such desperate need of that, you know, of jobs in general, but specifically, when you see an opportunity like that, I'm delighted that, you know, that the county's EDC is, you know, is encouraging that.
Well, the whole idea of this BiFreshBiLocal actually can be a job creator.
Absolutely.
And they, they are really moving forward with that in mind.
It's very, it's very exciting that it's finally catching on, regardless of the handle people use for it, shop local, local, buy close by, I mean, whatever it is, that just the more money you spend locally, the more money stays in the area. It's just so much better, you know, it definitely-
The thing that resonated last night was a guy from Capabilities, you know, the company with the farm products, said, he was, he was selling tomatoes for $20 a box and having to truck them up to Chelsea, and he was going, basically going under. And he said, with local produce sold through the farmer's market, you could get to, you know, up between $3 and $4 a pound of fresh produce here, which would mean that you could hire people for the farmer's markets, you could hire people to, you know, to do the, you know, do the sewing and ripping.
You needed the driver, transportation, everything.
Transportation, all of those.
And just as a reminder, Bill, we funded them to, to do that year-round tomato production.
This is good.
The other, the other thing-
A few years ago, so it takes some time, but we do see some very good projects.
In Truro, they were talking about a woman who created her own business, just picking up all of the goods, if you will, from the farmers, so the food stocks.
And getting them to-
And getting them to, to the market. And she's been able to actually have a business that does that, and they're happy because now everything kind of goes to certain points so that it doesn't, it's not such an onerous task to, for each farmer to get their, to get their produce to where it needs to go. So, that was really a good thing. So, anyway, all good stuff.
Thank you.
Do you want a grand job?
Thank you for your vote.
Excellent.
I will be informing Mr. Zavala of your vote sometime today.
Just will look forward to seeing.
And we will be, I guess I need to touch base with Mark, because I'm gonna be sending some letters out for those who were funded and those who were not of the grant thing, and I will tell them to look forward to your contract shortly, I guess.
Yeah.
Is that what we, does that make sense?
Yeah, we'll send out a contract.
Okay. And if you have any questions of the scope of services or how-to on any of them, just-
Well, did you leave a copy of that report somewhere, or did you have only?
You want?
Yes, you leave that with me, and I need something more, then we'll-
By the way, you ought to promote Jay to get something. He has these pins at the Farm Chamber of Commerce, these Cape Cod replicas, made out of, you know, brass.
Yeah, I have several of them. Would you like one?
Oh, you know what else they passed out last night?
No.
They had these little stickers. I bet, they're in my pocket, but of the different coat. It says Till Baby Till, and it's the logo of the rooster for the egg, the egg fair they had in Truro, and this woman designed it, and it's supposed to be the, the counter to Drill Baby Drill, you know, the sourpail, right? Sourpail, but it's really cute.
Good chipper.
That was actually drilled.
I took some of those with me.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
Bye. Now, Felicia's gonna come to our lunch, right?
Yes.
They all get a-
All right, so I can keep this with this.
They all get invited to our lunch, is that correct, all of our?
Yes, well, December 22nd.
Right.
At 12 o'clock in this room, there will be a holiday lunch.
For our employees and-
Yes, for our staff and-
And for the people who work in the building.
Work in the building and on our volunteer advisory.
We haven't had a motion to approve these actions yet.
We haven't done any yet.
No, so let's do that next.
I'll move that.
Any second.
All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. And then, we have an attachment on summary of action for execution today, which, there are three items there. The amendment between Barstool County and Yarmouth to extend the mitigation funded agreement, the contract with Cape Cod Compact regarding an internship, and with Old Kings Highway Regional Historic District Commission for financial services of $900 from January 2011 through December 31st, 2011. So, a motion?
Hold that.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? None opposed? Three courts. Would you like to report now?
I think we, in the beginning of the meeting, we talked a little bit about where-
We did.
I think we did, I don't know.
Right, okay.
But I, I would want to mention one thing. At the No Place For Hate Committee, you know, that I sit on in the Town of Barnstable, representing the county, there was some conversation about, about the need of adults to speak up when they hear inappropriate language. For example, you know, kids might say, you know, "That's so gay." And one of the things that happens is that they did a survey in the Barstool High School, and they found that the kids wanted adults to speak up when they heard inappropriate, inappropriate references. And I was, I was over at Harwich High School, and, you know, doing a unit, and this one kid stopped saying, "You know, that kid is so gay." So, I said, I mean, "That, that is so gay." I said, "Look," I said, "As long as I'm in the room, I don't want you talking like that." And the kid that was sitting beside him said, "You know, my uncle's gay, and I'm very offended by that." So, you know, the, the reason I'm bringing it up is that all of us that, you know, that hear that kind of language, if we spoke up as adults to say that we didn't like to hear it, it might go a long way of convincing kids and convincing the public at large that it's inappropriate to speak in that way, and that it would nip it in the bud if you see it.
Sometimes they're not being taught that at home, and they need to have, people show them what is social etiquette and consideration of others, and I think it's all of our job. And people no longer do that anymore. We're always like, oh, they'll, I mean, there was a time the teacher could give you a, a clout, but, so those days are gone, but I don't think that there's anything wrong with any of us. And we don't have to jump down their throat and belittle them, we can just say, you know, "Yeah, that's just not appropriate." And, you know, you have to consider what you're saying. Words are powerful. So, good for you, Bill.
Do you have anything you want to add?
I don't. I, you know, the Bill brought up a thing about the vegetation management, I'd like to talk about it next week. We're moving forward on that. We are gonna be wrapping things up with a plan of action coming to the end, and-
How, my question is, how are you gonna deal with all of these towns that are voting these resolutions?
Well, they should do all these resolutions they want. There's no authority on the Cape for anyone to ban, this is the whole purpose. If we, number one, when we, when, this was brought up a year ago, I discussed this with the Executive Director. Do they, they're the regulatory authority here, can, do we have the regulatory power to ban herbicides? And there was a point where there was going to be a ban, and then it was gonna have to be hashed out probably in court, which would have been very expensive and ridiculous. Come to find out, Eastham explored it, they had a year moratorium prior to this year, so they've gone two years without spraying. And, and many towns don't get sprayed. So, I'm not requesting for them to tell us that, you know, there's some towns that they don't have to use spray in, although that there is this notion that they're, you know, from one end of the Cape to the other. So, I'm asking for that information, but I'm also asking for information from all, I've asked Bill Clark to ask the municipalities what their vegetation management plans are. We have one. How much do we contribute? And if, the problem is, if you're going to hold NSTAR to a standard that nobody else has held to, then you're not solving any problem. I mean, my focus came in on this when you started to look at all of the amounts of herbicide chemicals being put into our system voluntarily, you know, through our own management programs or through individual private use. It's enormous. So, to bring NSTAR up as this poster child does not solve the problem. Might make you feel good, but it's not gonna do anything about the problem. So, I've asked the Cape Cod Commission to give us an aggregate amount of how much is put in from the different various sources. That would take a really big study, and we might be able to get that money through the monitoring fields, and even if, like right now, down in the Eastham, they have monitoring wells. They will have a two-year base to, to take samples. And once NSTAR, people think they're gonna start in January, they're just putting out their letters of municipal, you know, agreements, and it really starts in the spring.[1715.58] out their letters of municipal, you know, agreements, and it really starts in the spring. So there's really several more months before this practice would start taking place. So there is a, there's a way to look at this, and then, what do we want to do about it? I mean, then, then there's really, like, how are we going to address this? Are we going to look for legislation that will give us the leg-? I mean, that is what I've asked the legislators from the beginning. You have a year to look at legislative process, and how can you look at giving some sort of regulatory authority, if not to the individual towns, but to the, to an agency, the RPA, like, that has regulatory authority? And what are the guidelines? What can we set up as the guidelines, the safety zones? I think everyone recognizes that even if, I don't know if there's any way you can keep herbicides from being, I mean, our farmers, whether we like it or not, not everybody on Cape Cod is an organic farmer.
Golf courses.
Golf courses. And they've all done, you know, there was a study with the golf courses, they're being very cooperative as well, everybody's working on these things. NSTAR ultimately would like to get to that point, but they're never allowed because it's a five-year, six-year plan. So every time they're held back, the extreme starts.
Well, my, my point was that it might be useful, since your committee is composed of stakeholders with different interests-
Aye.
-is to have a, is to have some, a report from each one of these stakeholders as to where they stand in it, rather, because I don't believe you're going to get a consensus that would, you know, that would move everybody in a particular direction. And I believe that the, the path to, to getting what you want is more on the path of, that the town would make a recommendation, or the state BEP would make a recommendation as to what would be not acceptable, but, but what they would consider to be an ideal practice.
Right.
And also incorporate in that, what would be the vegetation management plan that would be acceptable by NSTAR as a corporate entity? Because remember, when I worked at Boston Edison, we had an arborist.
They have their arborist at all our meetings.
They do.
Yes. I mean, they have a whole, a whole department of this.
Bill, isn't that why we formed the committee?
That's right, that is why we form it.
Which has, you know, kind of both sides of the fence.
Exactly right. The other, the other point, you know, if you look at, I mean, they're, they've, they used to cut in, cutting mode, you know, clear cutting. They were taken to task by the Department of Natural Resources because they were hurting endangered species and habitat.
Yeah, we don't have enough bittersweet in the Cape.
So, there's other, there's other things being affected by it, and it's just really a decimating thing that can never grow back. That's why we have a lot of stand in all these things. So it's not as though NSTAR is just saying, "This is what we want to do." They have regulations from everybody, from the federal government all the way down, about 10 different agencies they're responsible to. The, the plan that they've adopted is looked at as award-winning. And if you read Silent Spring by Rachel Carlson, in the middle of her book, she talks about management, utility management, and she recommends this practice that they incorporate. And it is actually been endorsed by, you know, you know, Audubon's and, you know, these, a lot of different agencies. So I know that those who want to just focus on NSTAR because it's an easy, it's an easy target, it's a big utility, you know, who likes them? You know, we all need them, but who really loves them?
All they do is send you a bill.
All they do is send us a bill, and, you know, they'll jack up our rates and, you know, something goes wrong with their operation. So, so, you know, of course, there's a, you, you want to be able to give them a kick when you can. However, it doesn't solve the problem. And if we really want to look at it, and we have a single source aquifer, there is more education that needs to be done. I know Green Cape is involved with education, but, you know, I didn't hear of Green Cape until all of this happened, so they weren't reaching me.
And by the way, on another venue, when I asked them what they were going to do about the, how was it the?
And there's no alternatives that they offer. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, that, they haven't responded, because I asked them what they were doing about the, about this issue with regard to a railroad between Wareham and Barnstable, and I wondered to know if they were going to go to those hearings and get involved with that process, because it's the, it's basically the same thing. It's clearing of a right-of-way. And I would suggest to you that the right-of-way on that railroad is closer to residential structure-
Absolutely.
-than, you know, than what's going on with, with this. However, since they don't appear to be interested in anything other than this particular project, then I think it would be useful to have what is aligned with just the transmission line itself, and what is the, you know, what is the opinion of the farmers and the, you know, and the, and the, and let's say, and the abutters-
Right.
-you know, that might be looked at in a collective way.
Right.
So they'll be reporting back to us?
Yes, we are going to, it's probably going to go a, a week or so.
Into January.
It's going to go into a week into January, so we will not have that finalized. But I know that the next meeting is our last meeting of the month. There'll be a lot of wrapping up on this in just those last two weeks, so what are we, how are we going to pull together?
And when that's, when is that going to be? Is that Friday?
The next meeting is on December 17th at 9 o'clock at the Assembly of Delegates. Again, public is welcome, but they're not, it's not really a forum.
Right.
It is a working group.
Right, exactly.
So I take public comment or, you know, suggestion at the end, but it's not for them to sit there. I mean, the other day, we had Laura Littlefill, she was just talking about different, you know, organic practices and that sort of thing, but she brought a woman up, and it was really sort of an inquisition. She was like, you know, "Why does NSTAR do this?" And I said, you know, "This is not a public comment period, this is, you can submit that to us if you wish."
And that's what the open meeting law means.
If you have something to educate us.
Doesn't necessarily mean, that's the chair's discretion as to whether you can speak or not.
Right, so.
Okay. Then I want to mention that last week, Bill and I, except I didn't have my phone, had a call from Brian Curry, the town planner in Thelma-
Yes.
-notifying us, the planning board was considering requesting us to file a DCPC with the Cape Cod Commission on wind turbines, on the sighting of wind turbines.
I haven't seen any letter from them.
Well, the letter was, I believe the letter was voted last night by the planning board. And Brian has been in touch with the town administrators, managers of Bourne, Sandwich, and Mashpee, and also the planners in those three towns. And there seemed to be interest among the other three towns in this DCPC as well. So we will be, we should be receiving a letter today from the Thelma Planning Board making this request for a DCPC for the upper Cape. So I, my comment, well, I mean, I just, these are my thoughts, and because we're not, we have to discuss this at some point, because I think we need to discuss whether or not, if we were to consider such an effort, that I would think that we might want to consider having a selectmen in the town vote to recommend this as well, not just have it come from the planning board. Now, I don't know, sometimes, you know.
When I was on the, when I was on the Cape Cod Commission, it, it was great concern to me that discretionary referrals were coming to the Cape Cod Commission from departments within communities, not that they didn't have the right to do it, but they did not inform the elected selectors.
Right, exactly.
And I had, and I had asked going forward that there be some evidence that they had been contacted, not that they were approving it or supporting it, but that they were aware of it. And, and I think that in this particular instance, I think that would be very important.
Well, that's something we should think about when we-
But also-
-put it on our agenda for discussion. And the other thing, I think they're going to ask is, maybe we consider this a Cape-wide DCPC.
Yes, well, the, the Assembly considering that as well.
Well, there's, there's an issue with regard to that, because we have significant investment through the Cape and Vineyard Electric Co-op-
Yes, it's good.
That's right.
...with regard to ongoing activities on the lower Cape. And I have a great concern, as we discuss this, that we, you know, we take into consideration our ongoing process that, you know, of things that look like they're moving towards success, that we don't do anything that interferes with the acceptance that we've gotten so far. So those are all elements that I think-
That's kind of what I was going to say, is you have to determine really what the scope that this covers is.
Well, we have to see a lot of it.
Because do you want to make it on every wind turbine, even if a resident wants to put up a 10 KW system or 100 KW system for a, you know, farm? So you have to really think about what it is.
And the other thing I suggested to Brian is that they have to tell us, if they want the commissioners to do this, what they expect to have happen in the course of the year-
That's right.
-the moratorium, and what outcomes they're looking for. What, what is going to be studied?
Yeah.
Not just sighting, there has to be, you have to have, you have to list what you expect to have happened during the course of that moratorium. So anyway, I mentioned that now, but we should consider putting that on our agenda in early January, I would think.
Although remember, again, we're getting our budget.
Okay, I would like to see this letter before we-
But we still have to do this.
I think we need to see the letter-
Before we schedule-
Before we schedule something.
Okay. And I agree, that we need to read the letter, so we know what we're talking about.
I do want to finish my report, because I do have an important thing in here. Remember at last week's meeting, Beth Albert mentioned the grant program from the Interagency Council on Housing and Homelessness? She has the letter from you to that interagency. It doesn't specifically ask for a specific amount, but it is for the grant funding for the Cape and Islands Regional Network to End Homelessness. So if I can ask you to sign that, she mentioned that last week.
Oh, yeah. And this is to, this is for the state funding?
Yes, to the Interagency Council on Housing and Homelessness, who's dispensing the money. Doesn't specify a specific amount that she's asking for, and she did say that last week. But it does mention, of course, our local programs have committed over $200,000 in leverage resources here on the Cape for homelessness programs. So I think that's pretty important.
Well, I think she made her case very well.
I think so.
And, I mean, there's no question about how the money has been used in the last year and a half.
She has been remarkable.
Well, while we're signing this, I got a, I got an email from Lance Lambroux telling me, and I think this is good news for the Cape, is that Congressman-elect Keating is looking at setting up an office at One Financial Place in Hyannis. So the fact that he's, they're actually looking at a place, I think is very important to us, because it was great concern about what Delahunt leaving, and they're closing the office over on, is it Main Street?
Yes.
That we wouldn't, you know, that we were kind of moving down the food chain with regard to attention. So I'm delighted to hear that, and I, people on Cape need to hear that.
I did want to mention that through the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative, we have seven photovoltaic systems set up on public buildings, schools, DPW buildings across the Cape, and those have been performing very well. And I say this because we just passed the second quarter for this calendar year's RECs, the Renewable Energy Certificates. And three of those systems were operational during that time, and they produced over 112 megawatts, megawatt hours of electricity. So that was actually more than we anticipated would be produced, so those are going very well.
Just to piggyback on that, the Howardstown meeting unanimously passed the, you know, the ordinance to support the installation of photovoltaics-
Oh, excellent. That's what we're working on.
On the covering of the, you know, of the landfill. The only monocolly dump is, is actually a cap landfill.
Cap landfill, right. And we are, I mentioned that last week, the Cape and Vineyard is working on that, they received eight bids that we are sorting through for that particular project, so that's good. Through the Facilities Department, I want to mention that John Blaze Dell received word from the Administrative Office of the Trial Court that they are very concerned about kind of their budget and the ability to pay the rent to the court facilities. So they are concerned about, a lot of times, many of the court people will ask John to do kind of special projects, and typically, John will do those, and then we will put those on the rent statement for the next fiscal year. But apparently, they're very concerned that there may not be money to pay those types of things next year, so.
Well, I would suggest they take the money from the probation department, that they're going to use next year.
What we're going to do is, until further notice, and when John is requested to do one of these special projects, he will let them know that they need to obtain special approval from the trial court before he's going to be able to do it.
Oh, yeah.
So we don't get stuck. I do want to mention, under general administration, that the Mass Interlocal Insurance Association, MIA, which Pat, you know very well, because you're on the board.
Right.
Well, they issued their members, and that's our insurance company, basically, that's a, a part of the Mass Municipal Association. And really, they do it as a, kind of a cooperative group. They issued their members an additional participation credit for fiscal year 2010, and Barnstable County earned an additional $8,601 credit off of our insurance, so we're happy to, happy to take that, and thank you very much, appreciate that. And, well, the last two things I already mentioned, one was the Beth Albert letter, and I mentioned the REPC working on the RFP for the 911 dispatch assessment study. So that's all I have.
That's good, excellent.
I, I found these written reports have been very helpful.
Good, good to take that. In January, the first meeting as part of the budget discussion, we'll get to, and I'll do, I'll do the financial overview report that you guys ask for periodically, I think I'll do that in January.
That's especially important for the new assembly.
And for the budget. Well, I'll do the, we'll do the Finance 101 for the new assembly, we'll schedule that maybe in February, I think we've done it in the past. But this will be kind of a comprehensive look at what all the revenues are and where I think they might be.
Excellent.
Now, is, is the 15th the last day of the assembly?
The 15th is the last day, yes.
Last assembly meeting.
So we will do the thing for George and a thing for Charlotte. I think you guys can mention that, we appreciate everybody's service, we know we have a couple leaving, but two we wanted to point out, I thought, I thought, I shouldn't post this publicly, but it won't be a surprise, but maybe we could name George an honorary dean and do that.
I think that would be a good idea.
And then just do Charlotte a certificate of appreciation for however, we'll find out however many years, but it's been a while.
Now, if I hadn't thought of that, it wouldn't just be a good idea, it would have been a great idea. It'd be, that's a good idea.
I have to check about the legal aspect, because like, show up and be presiding officers.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, you know, it's a-
I think they would always give them a hearing.
Yeah, I think, but that's what I had thought of.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And then I thought, on the 22nd, we will have it as Lou Cattabdo Appreciation Dean will make a proclamation, and he'll come in maybe before lunch.
Right.
Yeah, you have to-
Then he can go right to lunch.
Yeah, we have to give him some fanfare.
Maybe we could buy a piece of something.
Yeah. No, no, it'll be the lunch, the, the, the holiday lunch, and then he can bring his wife in.
Yeah, we need to call him and remind him.
Yeah. And, and per our earlier conversation, I think I will reimburse Lou for a part of his contribution to that, to the, to the facility.
We put something together, let's do that, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll do something.
Yeah.
It's be done.
That's good.
That's it.
Yeah, that's, it's amazing what Lou has been able to do, especially in his later years.
And what a true, like, soldier of the county. I mean, he is really a steward, and, yeah.
He has really done a lot.
He has. And, you know, you could see, you know, they were saying that when they did that Coast Scout museum, they were thinking, "What are we going to put in here?" And now it's, and the same would happen.
Yeah.
And I'm sure it would be, you know, there's some precious stuff in there, I think that there's probably gems that, you know.
I did mention-
Let's all saw Teddy Kennedy thing touch me, because I do remember let's all saw-
Yeah, I remember that, well.
I remember when Teddy Kennedy was there.
I did mention to Lou about, you know, I asked him whether he still had the kind of funding in place for the separate facility, which I think is a good idea. And he was a little bit hesitant, he wasn't sure. So I did say maybe we could work with, a lot of times, the Fire Train Academy is very good at soliciting donations of material and that kind of thing.
I mentioned, I mentioned, what's the name of that woman that was over there with the museum, the old bus?
Nancy.
Tess, oh, Nancy.
No, Tess was at the, at the archives, who, I don't know, I didn't catch the one at the-
Nancy is the one at the jail.
No, this is the other one. Okay. I was sure that, you know, that Taunton has a state surplus facility.
Oh, the surplus stuff, yeah.
And that, and I, you suggested that we put it in effect with the rain gave us-
Yeah.
-to see how to, how to access that, because much of the material we're looking for is available, you know, through the state, for nonprofits and, and for, you know, for state-
I'm thinking more like building materials, like wood and plywood and blah, blah.
Can I also just bring up, if you remember Scott Nickerson came over. Now, I know that there's been a change because the health department's moving over, and that the basement is more accessible now, and they had a plan of being able to bring prisoners in that way.
Right, right.
And we talked about having, there was once a building committee and we thought that it would be a good idea to reconvene that with Scott and maybe, I know Judge Nickerson has approached me.
Yeah.
With different things that could be done in this building. And Pat should probably go on that tour, that, frightened to be Jesus idea, but, you know, that might be a good, a good group to bring back together to have, and maybe someone from the commission to look at the planning of this complex at this point. We're going through some changes. What would be the most effective way of doing it? We're having open Cape up at the top of the hill. How could we tie all of this in before just kind of giving a building over here and, you know, it's a waste of, I think there is a plan that we could do. So I propose that we reconvene this with, with those types of entities and really come up with a, a working complex.
Yeah.
That is accessible to the public and public friendly and to the village itself.
Right.
Maybe a member from the village association on that committee.
A big piece of, kind of the basement piece of this was waiting for, you know, this kind of release of decam.
Right.
We had this decam.
Right, so now we.
Now we move beyond that, right.
We have a little bit, we have a bigger window that we could work with without having to go through the state. So I think it would be time this year to really take a look at this because we're going into the future.
Yes.
And why keep, why keep doing things? We keep pointing out where people do things willy-nilly. We shouldn't be guilty of that.
Well, that's true.
Organization is indeed the key to effective.
Well, it's good to have, you know, to take a look and think, well, these are the things we need and this is the space we have and this is how it could work and this is how it could be really friendly. And the banana's over there, I mean, they're at our disposal.
Well, it would be good to get that underway now because now that we're going to be doing the assessment too.
Right.
That as we're looking at what people do, we can, we can have this other group look at the space and it could maybe be, be kind of a ongoing.
Yes.
Effort with, with both groups.
Well, interestingly enough, as we, as we start the process of evaluating the departments, I think that that might fall out of that.
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I was saying.
Okay, so that's what I propose. You're going to have to take it up.
Yeah, well, I think, no, we will convene that this week in January.
Do whatever I can to help.
The other thing.
Well, I was, it hasn't met since Mary was here, so it's been a while.
Mary was the one who was on.
Mary was on. Mary was the commissioner who was representing. And then it was Scott Nickerson and my son.
Her client, her client.
Jack, I believe Mead was on.
I mean, I think that there is an opportunity here. There's a lot of things happening, as I say, with the open Cape. And I mean, how can we make the connection? How can we open it up to the public? How can we be, you know, a neighbor to the village association? You know, there's a lot of different issues.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, yeah, let's do that. That's coordinating.
Yes.
All right, anything else? Looks like you're ready to go.
I'll make a motion, I'll be adjourned.
She's leaving anyway, so.
I could have given you a.
All right, one second. All in favor, say aye.
You have a cape.
Be adjourned.